Thirty on my time, sir, if you'd like to begin.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's Costa Mesa Sanitary District Boards of Directors Meeting. August, no, August, December twenty-one, twenty-twenty. And would you all please follow me again in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the Republic.
For which we stand. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll do the prayer. God grant me the serenity to accept the things. I cannot change the courage to change the things that I can and the wisdom to know the difference. On Nolani, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Director Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Director Art Perry.
Here.
Director Brett Echols.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President Robert Uten.
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have any late communications?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, we did receive written communications from Mr. Jim Mosher, which was disseminated to the board earlier this afternoon.
Yes.
You should have it, and it was included also in our board docs under public comments for the public's review.
Any other, I've read that, any other communications?
No, sir, there were not.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the public wishing to make public comments at this time?
Mr. Mosher has his hand raised, Mr. Vice President.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosher, please.
Yes, thank you. Vice President Uten, members of the board, this is Jim Mosher. One thing I did not put in my comments that I wanted to bring your attention is that since the district went to divisions in the most recent election, over this last weekend, I was trying to look at the district website to find a way to communicate with my new representative. And I may have missed something, but I was surprised to find nowhere on the website could I find any mechanism to directly send a message to my representative or any of the other board members. This is unusual. Most public agencies, city councils, most other districts, on the page where they show their Board of Directors or Council or whatever it is, have an email address or phone number to contact those representatives, and sometimes a group email address that you can send a message directly to all of them if you don't want to send a message through the agency's staff. I seem to recall that in the past, the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, on the pages where you saw the directors, there was a contact form that you could put information in and push a button, and it said it would send a message to those. It was not quite as clear as just providing an email address. But I do think the district and the directors should provide a mechanism, as most other agencies do, to directly communicate with our representatives. And if I missed something, I apologize, but I was surprised not to find it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Jim. We'll move on to approving the consent calendar.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion items to be removed or discussion of any items? I have one item that I'd like to discuss after it's approved.
You want to discuss that beforehand, Bob, or not?
Oh, sure. We use the term CEO, which I think staff and the directors know that that's the code enforcement officer. But when I scrolled down through there, when I see CEO, that means that's an important position in a company. And so I think those kinds of acronyms, especially, well, acronyms in general, we should spell those out. You know, when I saw the CEO report, I immediately thought, is Scott the CEO? Anyway, I would appreciate it if you spelled at least that acronym and others that internally we know what they are, but public might not.
Good idea. That's a really good idea.
Not a problem.
Did someone?
I made the motion and Mike seconded it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. We'll go on to the General Managers' Reports, and that is, the first item on there is approving the twenty-twenty-one meeting and office closure calendar. Does any director have any discussion on this item?
The only thing I thought about was we have those meetings with our manager occasionally. And I think that should be, I don't know if we have to have that on our calendar or not, but I just didn't see that.
Director Perry, this meeting calendar is for the public attended meetings, so those monthly meetings are kept on a separate calendars for the directors.
That's what I thought, but I thought we'll have a calendar for that later. Okay, thank you.
Bob, I had a question. This, Mike, on the liaison committee meetings, maybe Scott or Nolani, Scott, you may not know this, but are we on schedule to do these? What's the history, or not the history, what's the prognosis of the, for the liaison meetings for the future?
I can respond to that, Director Schaefer. We are on schedule to have the quarterly liaison meetings as calendared. The other agencies have agreed to that so far. I believe that there will be a request by Newport Mesa Unified to move the April scheduled meeting due to a, I believe it's spring break or something, that the school district will be in session for that. So they're looking to hopefully move it either a week prior to or after. So that will be a discussion at the January meeting, but as of right now, yes, you are scheduled.
Okay, then just another question. In the public comments that were sent to us earlier today, there was mention of why CMSD sends all of our board members to the liaison committee meetings and the other agencies only send two or whatever. What's, I mean, we've always sent all of ours because it seems like we all have something to learn, I think, but is there any, what's the drawback? What's the problem with us sending all five of us to those?
Yeah, you want me to respond, Nolani?
I just realized that in past practice, we've always listed all five board members on the agenda, just in case all five board members were able to attend. Normally, it's the Board President and Vice President that sit in on the liaison meeting to have the deliberations or the discussions, sorry. And then the other three are present to just attend. And if I'm mistaken with that, Scott, you can correct me, but that's.
Yeah, I believe that was the original intention, but in past practice, all five board members like attending these meetings. They like having the dialogue with the other officials. And so we thought it was, I mean, it's good for more, for everyone to participate. So it wasn't an issue on staff's perspective, but that's, but Nolani's correct. That's how we were intended to.
I think the member of the public who had brought it up was concerned that we are all getting our stipend for that meeting. Have we had any other public input on that? Is anybody else, have we heard from anybody else that's concerned that we're, that we're getting stipend for attending those meetings?
No.
Okay.
I think, well, Mike, are you done?
Yeah, Bob, I'm done.
Well, I think the important thing is, I think we had this discussion once, and it's just a matter of how we agendize the meeting, which allows, you know, all five board members to go if they want. So we agendize it for the potential that all five can go.
Understand.
Mr. Vice President?
The comment was directed, Bob, in a way that the gist of it for me was that we're wasting ratepayer money by all of us going to it.
Oh, yeah, I read that.
Okay.
I don't agree with it, but I read that.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes.
I just, in general, maybe this is a question for Scott or anyone on the board. The liaison meetings, while all five can attend, and I understand agendizing it for that reason, typically are all five there normally?
No. This is Mike Brett. No, I mean, it all depends on our schedules, but I can't recall the last time that all five of us were there.
Got it. Thank you.
Sorry, Bob.
Do we have to formally approve this item?
I'll move, I'll move the approval of the twenty-twenty-one meeting and office closure calendar as recommended by staff.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, now we'll move on to the Boards of Directors' nominations and appointments. And I guess the first item, let's see. First item of business is Costa Mesa Sanitary District. Appointment to what, oh, oh.
Let's do the.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm a little confused, but I can get this going. The Costa Mesa Sanitary District needs to appoint the president. Do I have any nominations for the president?
I'd like to nominate Bob Uten as president.
Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And nominations for Vice President? I'd like to nominate Mike Schaefer.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And nominations for Secretary?
Like to nominate Arlene Schaefer.
Second.
Any other nominations for Secretary? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now nomination for the board member to the Orange County Sanitation District?
I'd like to nominate Bob Uten as a representative to the Orange County Sanitation District Board of Directors and as the alternate Art Perry.
Any other nominations for the Orange County Sanitation District Board Member and Alternate? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? And the Santa Ana River Flood Protection Agency Board Member?
I'll nominate Art Perry as the board member and Bob Uten as the alternate. No, Bob? Bob, you shook your head. Do you not want that nomination?
Well, I think, no, I think it's important that that the Orange County Sand District be represented on that board. So, any other nominations for that position? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
But we still need an alternate, though.
That would be Bob.
Even though we only meet like four times a year and we only have like a year left. But, no, Bob would be the, he's representing the Orange County Sanitation District, hopefully, if that's who appoints him. I don't know how that works. Do you know that, Bob? Do they nominate you, or do you ask to be nominated to SARFA?
I honestly don't know. You know, I've been to most of their board meetings for the past almost fifty years, seems like. And I've never heard a representative from SARFA give a meeting report. I think that's something that we should continue to study.
All right. Do you want to, so we have Art as the board member. Do you want a different alternate than Bob until?
Well, only because I think this appointment is integrally tied to the Orange County Sand District. Would I do it? I would do it.
Then if you do get appointed, then we could have a different alternate. Because if you get appointed by Orange County Sand, which I think you probably should, then we could have another alternate, once you find out that information.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's acceptable.
Okay, my motion still stands that Art Perry be the SARFA board member and that Bob Uten be the alternate.
All in favors, say aye.
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 I'm sorry, Mr. Vice President, I didn't get the second.
I seconded.
Art, thank you. And also, Mr. Vice President, I have Mr. Mosher, who has his hand raised for public comment on that.
Jim, please go forward.
Yes. Thank you. Now, President Uten.
Thank you.
I did, as many of you may have read, submit a written comment. I realize the good work that this agency does. I'm a little confused about the Costa Mesa Sanitary District's interest in the flood control, because we are not a flood control district. And I would hope for clarification of Director Perry's comment that you had one year left. Does that mean SARFA is dissolving in one year? We've been members of it for twenty-three years. I noticed the city of Costa Mesa is not. I am represented there by Newport Beach, by the county, by Orange County Sanitation District, all of which I pay taxes to. It's, the reason it was formed was for the main flood control project, which seems to have been federally funded. And their interest seems to have drifted now to things that don't impact this district at all, like the Westminster Watershed Project. And so I'm just, I understand the Orange County Sanitation District's interest. I'm not quite sure I understand why we are singling this out for membership. And to Director Mike Scher, I guess now Vice President Schaefer's comment, my interest is not totally in the expenditure of money. It's just I'm not understanding the connection with this district, quite honestly. Thank you.
Jim, I probably have a little input on that. I think there's at least four tracks of, you mentioned the two parks, but there are four tracks that would be subject to flooding in Costa Mesa. And flooding affects, as early as nineteen sixty-nine, Treatment Plant Number One was flooded. And then they built flood walls around it. And the lower levels of Costa Mesa, I don't know if they were flooded back then, but there are the Lower Bird Streets, Mesa Verde Track, the State Street Track, and the and maybe some others. There's a substantial number of homes that could be flooded, but I think the real, the real point is if that dam should ever, if flooding ever occurred because that dam failed, it would affect many, many of the sanitation district agencies, and it would affect Costa Mesa. But I think your comments are well taken, and I think we need to look into it.
Can I make a comment, Bob?
Yes.
I think I've had discussions with Vice President Schaefer. And I think we have a number of residents still over in the Mesa Verde area that are being charged extra fees for insurance because of the flood. But, you know, we had the whole Costa Mesa, we used to all have to pay flood insurance. This agency has worked hard to get things changed where we only just have a few members. Is that correct, Mike? Do we just have a few members paying, or a few residents paying for flood insurance?
Actually, SARFA has done so well in working with our congressional representative that there are no areas in Costa Mesa now that require flood insurance.
That's awesome.
SARFA has been a benefit, to me, the benefit to SARFA and the sanitary district is the infiltration that could come into the groundwater and into the sewer system to overload the county. So I see a real value for us continuing on that, on that. But again, Art, to answer your question, they've done a bang job of getting rid of us having to buy flood insurance. Doesn't help, doesn't help me personally in my occupation, but that's okay. I can put up with that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just a general question on that. If Mr. Mosher was correct, the city of Costa Mesa is not a member. Is there a reason for that that anyone knows about?
I can, no, unfortunately, no one really knows. In fact, Mr. Mosher's question was a very good question. I don't know, honestly, I don't know why the district is a member of SARFA. I think what Vice President Schaefer cited regarding infiltration is plausible. But I would have to, what I need to do is, what I would like to do, if it's okay with the board, is get in contact with the General Manager at SARFA. Maybe he knows some history of why the district, the Senator District, Costa Mesa Center is a member, and then I can report back to Mr. Mosher and to the public.
I think I can add a little to that. The city of Costa Mesa is represented as one of the twenty-five member agencies by the Costa Mesa Sanitary District. And so while Orange County Sanitation District, the Regional Sewering Authority had, you know, was historically flooded a number of times and stands to be potentially flooded again. I think, Brett, that the sanitary district represents the searing interests that is probably the main reason why why we're a member and not the city. But I don't know that for sure. That'd be my reasoning, but.
Yeah, if it would be okay with everyone, I'd be curious, Scott, if you got, you know, definitive answer.
Sure. No, I believe that, but I believe it would be good to have a definitive answer, yes.
Thank you.
I think that concludes the appointments to other associations and committees that we need to approve. Let's move on to item number three, the the appointment of one member to the Citizens Advisory Committee to fill the vacant one-year term that ended in, that will end in March of twenty, no, for the term through March of twenty-twenty-two.
Bob, I have a question before you proceed, because I like to ask Alan, Adam Erith is my nephew. And he's one of the two people that put in their request to become this member. Do I have to stand down and not participate in this, Alan? Or is it okay for me to participate?
There's not a legal requirement for you to abstain as long as you're not supporting him or he's not supporting you financially. If it's just your nephew, then there's no legally required conflict.
Yeah, I just wanted to put that on the record. So, okay, I think I'll participate then, if that's okay.
Hey, everyone's read the, the board members have read the written materials were submitted. Does anyone have a nomination for that term, for that committee member? Well, then I'd like to appoint Adam Erith to that position.
I'll second the nomination. I'll second it.
Any other considerations for appointing a different member to that commission?
Mr. President?
Me. Yes, yes.
Just a question, a follow-up question. Thank you, Director Perry, for asking about the vote. And for Alan, just a question. So as long as there's no financial interest, there's no, you know, nepotism or, you know, things of that nature for a relative sitting on a advisory board or any other board tied to the sanitary district?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other nominations, do I, well, I guess I made the recommendation that Adam Erith be put on the Citizens Advisory Committee. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I would like to mention that I believe Scott or Nolani can fill me in on this, but I believe at the turn of the year, there will be, there's twelve members on that committee presently, I believe. There will be openings. Some are a substantial number of openings.
I believe that there will be, there will be seven openings, Mr. President. So the other candidate who had submitted the application will then be asked if they would like to be considered in the next round of applicants that go forward to fill the next term.
Hey, thank you very much. So there's a lot of need for members, and we've appointed one tonight. The next item is receive and file the CAFRA, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Auditors report in accordance with the government auditing standards. And the auditors required communications for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Scott, will Caitlin be doing this, or will you be doing this?
Yes, Mr. President, I'm going to turn this over to Caitlin. She'll give a brief introduction about the CAFRA, and then she'll introduce our auditor who did the, who's our auditor. So I'll turn it over to Caitlin.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. In front of you is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty, compile after completion of the two thousand nineteen twenty audit. Also attached, you will find the auditor's required communication letter and the auditor's report in accordance with the government auditing standards. Timon Ramirez and Smith Audit Firm has issued an unmodified, or in another word, a clean opinion for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty audit. Some of the financial highlights during the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty are the district total asset ceded liabilities by approximately sixty-three point one million. Of this amount, ninety, I'm sorry, nineteen point five million is unrestricted and available to meet the district ongoing obligations. Net position of solid waste fund decreased by approximately six hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Remember, the district adopted a deficit budget of approximately seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand in the solid waste fund. However, revenue came in higher than budgeted and expenses were lower than expected. The wastewater fund net position increased by approximately one point one million. This increase was due to an operating, to operating revenues exceeded operating expenses by approximately seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. The remaining increase was the result of larger-than-expected investment earnings. As of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, the district's net pension liability is one hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and eighteen. The district is ninety-four point eight percent funded for its pension liability, while its other post-employment benefits, also known as OPEB, are fully funded. Mr. Calhoun, partner of the audit firm Timon Ramirez and Smith, is here today to go over the audit and answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Caitlin, everybody hearing okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to work with the district staff. This year presented some interesting challenges due to COVID-nineteen. We had to perform the audit remotely, something new in my profession, been doing this over ten years, so that these new challenges that we had to work with this year. But we were actually able to perform the audit rentably effectively and able to utilize technology and other means to coordinate and perform the audit. We were engaged to perform a financial statement audit, which is required under California State Constitution to make sure that your financial statements are properly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We accomplished this by performing tests of the transactional balances, amongst other tests, to ensure the accuracy of the internal controls, as well as the numbers presented within the CAFRA. But overall, our focus is obtaining sufficient audit evidence. But overall, our focus is obtaining sufficient audit evidence to perceiving an opinion on the financial statements themselves. Uh, we have completed a process and I'll be going through the various reports and letters that we issue as part of the audit. The first one is as part of the audit is the auditor's report that is contained within the financial statements themselves. Within the report, it states that the the elaborate management is responsible for the presentation of fair presentation of the financial statements where we as the auditor our responsibility is to express an opinion that make sure that they are free of material misstatement. We have completed the process and had issued a unmodified, also referred to as a clean opinion on the financial statements and indicate they are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Within the CAFER, overall, it has remained relatively the same. There is no new significant accounting changes this year. But one highlight I did want to point out was the issuance of GASTI Number 95, which was a postponement of the effective dates of several upcoming pronouncements. Due to COVID-19, GASTI, which is the Accounting Standards Board for Government Agencies, saw that the pandemic was having a great deal of effect on government agencies and allowed additional time for those agencies to implement additional the new standards going for over the next couple of years. The next report that we issue as part of the audit is a internal control report and also on financial compliance. This is required under government auditing standards, whether there are any issues or not. It is used to communicate any deficiencies in internal control or any issues concerning financial compliance. I'm happy to report that there was no such issues for us to report. The last item that we present as part of the audit is the Audit Communication Letter, also for this S114 letter. This discusses the conduct of the audit. Whether we we feel that direct communication from us, the auditor, to the governing body. Within it, while we discuss various audit matters that are required under the auditing standards for us to have a discussion with you. One main thing area we do point out that management does use estimates in their financial reporting. And we feel that the methods and assumptions used in those estimates are appropriate, given the circumstances. Also, that we indicate that there were no issues in performing the audit and there was no significant audit adjustments or material misstatements as part of the part of performing the audit. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Uh, do any of the board members have questions?
I have one question. You that you made us, you put a thing in the last page of the audit, restrictions of use, restrictions on use. Remember that?
That is the in the governance communication letter that is standard language that is technically is supposed to be restricted to communicating between management and the board since they are well aware of the behind the scenes activities going on.
Okay, does that mean no outside agency can use this information?
In in theory, even though you have it readily available, you and you decide to make it publicly transparent. There's nothing negative about making it available. Most agencies do to make the audit process very transparent. But in our our standards and some legal capacity, yes, it is restricted.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that point forward. I thought that was pretty interesting.
Do any, do any of the other board members have questions or inputs?
Yeah, Bob, this might just, I I I guess I would like to congratulate Caitlin and her department. Since she's taken over as finance manager, we continually get exemplary reports on our CAFER and we've actually gotten national awards on it. So just a a word of congratulations to Caitlin and to her staff for continuing to keep this high standard for us. And when you read the the letter and there's there's no negatives in the letter. We must be, she must be doing a good job and her staff as well. So just congratulations to to the finance department for doing everything they're doing.
You're here.
Thank you very much. That means a lot to us.
Uh, any other questions?
Caitlin, you mean a lot to us, so keep it up.
Will do. Thank you.
Well, I think Mark Davis probably deserves a little bit of credit for that, but.
Oh, yes. Thank you to Mark Davis as well. We we can't do it without him.
Um. Do I hear a recommendation to approve this?
Move for approval of this presentation as presented.
It's just a receiving file, Mr. President.
Right, just receiving.
Oh, it's a receiving file, okay. And then we can move on to the, if there are no further discussion, we'll move on to the the Bristol Street Sewer Siphon Repairs. Scott, are you going to do this or?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. President. So unfortunately, I had to bring this item to you again tonight. This seems like to be an ongoing, never ending part project, but the good news is, yes, the project is finally completed. It was probably one of the most challenging projects we ever encountered because of the difficulty of the, it's a siphon, which is our difficulties. There's just a lot of cleaning it took. And so that was the cleaning, which is really unanticipated and it was very slow and tedious and is very labor intensive, which is really drove the price up. The the contractor did finish lining both lines in this in the siphon. So now we have a fully rehabilitated siphon that can last for another 50 years. Unfortunately, we only had about, you know, eight, eight, $8,700 balance left. That's why I'm requesting an additional 60, $60,000 to be transferred out of the asset management fund for this project. The work's already been done, so we pretty much have to do this. I also wanted to be very transparent with with the board and the public how much this project costs. No one of you scroll down a little bit farther to the financial section, please. All the way down there, keep going all the way down to the bottom. There you go. Keep going. There we go. So basically, we spent over $745,000 on this project and that includes you know, that includes the the emergency work that we had to do, which was, you know, removing the the hoses that got stuck, doing some temporary repairs, then also the the cleaning and lining. So it was all inclusive how much we spent on this project. And so staff is recommending the board approve transferring $60,000 from the asset management fund to to the wastewater fund for this Bristol Sewer Siphon Repair Project.
Scott, this and this completes the project. We 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 there won't be any other costs?
Correct. That is correct.
Do the board members have any questions about this project?
I just have one question, President Newton. Scott, what would be the estimated cost of the lining for that whole project? You have any idea?
The lining of the project was $68,000. That was that. That's the project that we done. You seen in the staff party, it was it was just under $70,000 to line the project.
Okay, sounds good. Just curious.
Was that, was that to line both barrels? They're dual dual lines there?
Both barrels, correct.
Hey, Bob, this Mike, I had a couple of quick questions.
Okay.
When when it originally happened, Scott, when that hose originally got stuck in the siphon. Are are you confident that there was no negligence on the part of the people doing the work, that it was just simply the fact that the siphon was screwed up and and the hose got stuck?
Yes, I think it was just natural wear and tear. And and honestly, it woke us up a bit thinking, well, what's what's the condition or other siphons? That's why we we did an assessments. And I think Mike's going to prepare a report on on those other siphons. It's just natural wear and tear.
Okay, that you just answered my second question. I think we talked about this when it originally happened. Any idea how many siphons situations we have in our system? Is it is it prevalent or is it just kind of isolated a few?
It's 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 a few and Mike, if you can chime in and estimate how many the total site, total number of siphons and how many are we looking at doing some repair work?
Yeah, um, this this particular site, and this was a one off. Someone had dumped concrete or grout or some into the sewer main. And that caused the problem. The other siphons we cleaned and inspected and they're they're nowhere in the established shape. So we are going to propose a project next year to line more of those siphons.
Thanks. I had forgotten that this is the one, I think we did talk about previously that someone had dumped something down and caused this, right? I know we've had that conversation, so I I I appreciate that and that being proactive and doing what we need to do with the other ones is is a good judgment, I think.
Well, in the future, we'll, I think I have a report on siphons. This this particular siphon, the hose got stuck, I think, because the concrete was in there. It it didn't get stuck. Or is is that is that true?
I don't, I don't know if it was the concrete that caused it. I I my understanding it was there was the the pipe was deteriorated and it got stuck in the pipe. I don't know. I can't recall if it was the concrete or not.
Well, we can get a report on that in the future.
Sure.
Any other questions on this item? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll motion to approve the transfer of $60,000 to the Asset Management Fund, from the Asset Management Fund to the Wastewater Fund.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? We can move on now to then the report on local meetings.
Engineering reports.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm I'm looking at another agenda here. Do we have any questions for Mike on the receiving files, the Capital Improvements Project Report?
Now, it's pretty, pretty good. It's a really good report.
Yeah, Bob, I have this, Mike, I have a comment and it's kind of tied with this and Scott and Mike, if you could chime in on this. I happened to see Ed, our CEO on California Street the other day, and I talked to him a little bit, and I noticed on the front of Mike's car a camera. And I said, what's the camera for? And I don't know whose idea was. So, Mike, if you if you want to take credit for it, Scott, you take credit for it. It's fine. Ed has a GoPro camera mounted on the hood of his car. And he's using it to check manhole covers. Is that right?
Yes, so we we just implemented a brand new program that we're going to share with the board next month as well with the CAC. We believe it's the only program in the country. And we're using artificial intelligence to detect the dilapidated manhole surfaces, particularly like the 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 asphalt apron around the the manhole. So basically, the the GoPro, what we what it'll do, it's video recording while Ed drives through town and the AI will pick up the the manhole covers. And then it will detect it by a rating of a one to a five, five meaning imminent danger and needs repaired immediately. And and that way it it prevents us from going out in the street in the traffic, inspecting it by person. It also allows us to keep up to date, making sure our our manholes are repaired in efficient manner because no one likes to drive over a a manhole cover and and and, you know, hear that huge clank and possibly injure their cars or stuff like that. So we want to make sure that our manholes are up to speed. But yeah, this is this is a game changer. I don't think anyone else else is doing this. So we're really excited to share this with with the board and the public and then hopefully to others out there.
Yeah, and and the reason I brought it up, other than I saw it is, Michael, you've got a lot of the manhole stuff on here. Will this project give you guys indications on whether they're grade five or grade four or whatever, or is it simply just that there's a problem?
No, I don't. It'll tell us all the, it'll give us all the ratings. Our 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 plan is to to every earth, every three months have all the manholes recorded, video recorded, and the AI, the artificial intelligence system will think and it'll tell us a one or a five. Now, we have the capabilities going into that system and and sometimes maybe the system might say oh, we might disagree. So while that the the AI may say, well, that's a that's a three, we we might say, well, no, that's more like a four and we'll change that. The more information we feed the system, the smarter it gets. And so over time, the system will get smarter and smarter and smarter and it's going to be much easier now to 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 track our our manholes.
So every three months, Scott, well, you're going to give us a report in the future. We have 212 miles of sewer. So every three months, somehow those 212 miles will be covered?
Yeah, we estimate it'll take Ed about two weeks to go through all the streets in 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 the district. So, yeah, every every three months, what will we do now?
Hey, Scott, I have a question. Where where do we keep that information? Does that go to the office or does it go to his car? Where does the information go to?
Yeah, it goes in, it goes to a cloud system. So he, the once we tell over the quarter, we take out the SIM card and we put it into computer system here and it goes in the cloud system and that's where it's maintain all the information.
When did we start this program, do you know?
Just within a few weeks, but I think this month we just started it.
Have you looked at any results right now?
Yeah, it's 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 working. I mean, again, we're it's brand new, so there's some kinks we still, you know, we got to work out. I'm making sure, again, making sure that it's identifying the right ratings. It's also picking up other objects, so we want to make sure, you know, it's that's not the object that wants to be picked up. So again, like I said, the more information we feed it, the smarter it gets.
The other question is, was the city doing that for us prior to this or they still was the city of Costa Mesa looking at those for us prior to this or?
No, no, we did it ourselves. We we hired our consultants about 2013. There was two reports we did and and they we just physically went out there and and inspected them physically. And then they have a report and so we we use that report. Every year, Steve would go out or staff would go out and, you know, if 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 last year it was rated a three, they would go out and say, okay, is it still a three or is it a four? So it's very time consuming and and dangerous, you know, so they have to go on the street. And so this way we'll cut down our staff time and make it a lot safer and have more accurate information.
It sounds like a great program.
Yeah, we're really excited to roll it out to 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 the board and to the public and and also, you know, the CSDA and everyone else, I think, CWA, all the I think I'll catch a lot of attention. You know, I would believe no one else is doing this.
Because, you know, the Chris Palmer was talking about these visual tours that these providing the different districts. This may be one of the things he can provide in one of his visual things.
Yes, definitely.
You know what I mean?
Definitely.
Scott?
Yes.
Uh, I think this would be a good program to share with the liaison committee in January. What do you think?
Yeah, yeah, let's, I I like to share it with the board first and see see what it looks like. But yeah, definitely can be shared with the liaison committee. Absolutely.
Well, Scott, this is like the sewers. You know, I I think a future refinement is if if you if you if you go, if you go 180 miles and it's all all ones, you know, then then in the future, you only have to, you know, tho- those manhole, tho- those things don't de- degrade that quickly. Anyway, you know, I'm looking forward to the discussion. I think we got a little off track. Does anyone have any further questions on the the Capital Improvements Project Status Report?
I just want to thank staff. Very comprehensive, straightforward and gives us the information. It it was just well put together, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the only thing I would like to add is, once we have a bid, it's noted in there that there was a bid. But what I would like to do is see the what what the bid price was, if if you would, if you would add that, Mike, in the future.
Yeah, I can do that.
Uh, is this, okay, this is a receiving file, so we can go on down to local meetings reports. The first one's Orange County Sand District.
Now, we got Treasurers Report, don't we, first?
Oh, yeah, well, the is there, is there a treasurer report?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything on the agenda this evening, but I do just want to mention that I'll need to coordinate with you now that you're appointed as you've been appointed as president, so we can get signature cards on our banking information all changed. So we'll need to do that since we're all kind of remote right now. We'll need to make some coordinated efforts to get those done so we can get them over to to the bank.
Okay, thank you. And is there an attorney report? Only don't forget to check out the planetary conjunction that's, I think, happening pretty soon between Saturn and Jupiter. Just another world record. I I think I think it's happening.
Is that a legal requirement that we have to go out and look at the sky?
Not at all. Alan, Alan, I think that's scheduled when your doctor's appointment is, so. Okay, I I Okay, I, I'm in a hurry to get to the local meetings. Yeah. And I get to give the first report. I've gone, gone to three of the Orange County Sand District meetings and I'll report on the, the board members. They, they're, they had a tremendous turnover in board members. They have 25 board members. There were 14 turnovers, four alternates and, and nine board members that they know of. If, if, if some of them don't get appointed, it could be more than nine, which, which is a huge turnover. They had a massive federal and state legislative report. Eric Stapzkeen from the Washington office gave a, a lengthy report. I've recorded that if any, if anyone wants to hear it. And also Townsend is, is their representative for state affairs. There were a lot of little infrastructure upgrades due, due to aging infrastructure within the plants and the pump stations. They did purchase new, two new emergency generators, 56 electric carts. And they did, they, they did a sequel plan for their master plan. And they gave an update on the management, asset management program and, and a payment of 700 plus thousand to, for their NPDS fees. And that concludes my report. You, you can go on there. I was, I was amazed at how long their December meeting was. Any questions?
How many members were present, Bob? Were there new members appointed or yet?
Yes, quite a number of them have been appointed and to, to Director Mosher or Director Mosher, maybe future director, but Jim Mosher's comments. It is important that they're, they're coming in all the time and they have to take the oath of office and do the, the 470 forms, the financial report, forms and, and then, and the clerks, they're just beside themselves to try to keep up with all the jur- the 25 jurisdictions appointments. Did Sarfa meet this month?
No, they did not, not till next month.
And the ISDoc, Secretary Schaefer?
Yes, ISDoc met on November 3rd. And this was more or less a swan song kind of meeting because it was the ending of all the people that were on the board and then the new board is coming in in January. So, and I've already told you about the new board. So then also 11/6 is Waco. And on Waco, Larry Dick was the Chair of the Nominee Committee and he announced that the new president for Waco is going to be Kathy Green. And the Vice President will be Mark Munner. So other than that, let's see, what else was there? I had, I did the study session on the 10th. CSDA had the Finance Committee. We met because we had somebody, it was a special meeting because Auburn Area Recreation and Park District needed financing. So we met on addressing that and talking about it. And everything went very well with it. We're doing very well with the Finance Committee right now. And then on 11, let's see, what else? CSDA had a, the Board Meeting on 11/13. So we kind of got to meet some of the new people on Zoom of who's taking over and talking about the new people that will be on the board now and who couldn't, who did not make it. And that, we're just kind of letting it go till January as far as a lot of information. We did go through the actually talking about the, our GM, our General Manager and talking about his having a review of him. So we did that. And I'm not privileged to say yet, well, I'll tell you in January how it came out. And the CDA Board Meeting talked also about just the three months, the January, February and March right now. Because we don't know what's going on with COVID and, and what's happening. So we're kind of letting it still go on Zoom for now. I would, I am not flying. So I'm just on Zoom. I decided that I'm not ready to get on the plane yet. The way things are. So that's the way it is. And, but it works out fine on Zoom. Yeah, other than that, that was it. Aside from the public hearing that we have in, in November.
Mike, do you have a report on Special District Risk Management Authority besides that they're going to raise rates?
I'm not going to tell you that we're going to raise rates. Actually, we had a meeting two weeks ago. I, I've been talking to all of you and all of the members in STRMA about the fact that STRMA is getting ready to form a captive insurance, captive joint powers authority out of the state of Utah. As part of the workers comp program in order to get better investments. And, and right now we're in the, in the middle of getting that done. And that's really all I have. We, we don't meet as a board again until the first week of January. But we're, we're not, we're not getting good vibes, I guess, from our reinsurers regarding the casualty part of of, of the joint powers authority. So I'll, I'll have more for you next month, but I think sticker shock will set in with insurance rates next month. Sorry about that.
Any other local meetings that anyone needs to report on?
Yeah, Bob, I have a couple of other quick, on the, on the 10th, I also you know, I think we're all, and Nolani can correct me on this, but I think we're all members of SWANA, the, the Waste Authority. And they had a webinar on the 10th regarding the effects of COVID on recycling and other trash related issues. And I don't know if Mike Carey, if, if he participated in that seminar, but it was kind of enlightening to hear what the industry, the, the solid waste industry, how it's being affected by COVID. Obviously, one of the big things they talked about was the increase in cardboard that's being put in, in the, the strain. You know, people are shopping more online and it'll be curious to see what their numbers are like after Christmas this year. All they have to do is check my wife and I'm sure they'll see how much cardboard is being put into the stream. So it was, it was a really good, SWANA puts on some really good webinars for information that, that we can all use as we look at our recycling program. So that was really good. And then on the 15th, I part, or I saw the OCSD and groundwater replenishment tour. The guy that you hired, Bob Herbert. The guy from, I guess he's with Orange County Water District, but
Mike Marcus.
Mike Marcus. They put on a really nice presentation and talked about some of the things that are happening between OCSD and GWR. So very informative. I got, I thought it started at a different time, so I didn't catch all of it. But the part I got was, was really good and it looked, there, there's some far out thinking over there and, and I, I think they're doing a lot to help with, with the water issues and the sanitation issues. So it was a, a good seminar.
Yep, yeah, the GW system provides water for, will soon provide water for 1 million residents in Northern Orange County.
You know, one, one of the really, at the, at the end of the, the presentation, they had both these guys on the screen. And to end the seminar, they both uncorked one of those bottles of water from the GWR and saluted everybody and they both took a drink out of the recycled water. So it was, it was pretty classy.
Mike, I have a, a number of those bottles of water if you want one.
I have one sitting right here in my office, Bobby, so I'm, I'm good.
Have you drunk it?
No, it's, it's a collector's item. I'm going to save it in case I have an emergency or something.
I, I have one that you can drink. I, I've drunk that water before. I, I worked on a feasibility study for that report, that, that project, but I, anyone, anyone else? I have a couple of meetings for other meetings that they need, local meetings they need to report on.
I have, I have a couple, Bob.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, I, the virtual, they're all virtual meetings, but I attended the city council meeting, a couple of things that popped up. One, one of the speakers discussed free speech must be allowed in, at the city council meetings and I guess at all our meetings too. And she even profanity. And so she was using all of these profanity words in her discussions. And no one stopped her. And I just, is that correct with us, Alan, also? Are you still on there, Alan?
Yes, I am, Director.
Do we have to allow profanity at our meetings?
Well, you have, you cannot stop the meeting until you, you have to, the person has to be disrupting the meeting. And I'm not sure what the limit is, but certainly fighting words, you can't yell fire. There's limits to first speech, to free speech. You can't yell the word fire and but you know, there's a there's a court case that says it's okay to you wear a t-shirt in the courthouse that says F the draft. And you, you have a constitutional right to say F you to a police officer. You, you may get arrested, but and you may have done something else wrong, but you have the right to say that. So there are there are broad latitude to saying things, but we haven't, we have an ordinance that says you shall conduct yourself appropriately and, you know, use courtesy and civility. But as far as, you know, an arrest for that or stopping the meeting, you can clear the meeting if it's so disruptive as to be interrupting the meeting, but the person couldn't be arrested, prosecuted for that unless he yelled fire or something like that. So limits of the First Amendment are, you know, tough, tough to gauge. But there's a substantial amount of free speech that's allowed under the Norwalk versus City of, City of Norwalk case, which we're all aware of and we've amended our ordinance to take that case into consideration.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the other board members. I didn't realize that they could be using profanity throughout their, their speech of three minute presentation.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the profanity was, but you know, if you said damn it or, you know, something like that, I'm sure that would be okay. But, you know, there may be something you couldn't say that would be so outrageous, but generally just shocking people, as long as it's just words, it's not enough.
Then another thing I, the city was talking about, and I think it's going to move in this direction, there's going to be more crosswalks and more stoplights below 19th Street in Costa Mesa. That's one of the proposals. It wasn't voted on or talked about much by the council members, but by the number of speakers, they said, we need more crosswalks and more stoplights on Placentia. So just, I don't know if that it's going to affect us at all, but it may. And then the new, new mayor pro tem is Andrea Marr. I don't know if you guys realized, knew that or not. I think she'll do a real good job as the mayor pro tem. Then I also received, the next meeting I went to was, I went to the Newport Mesa Board Meeting about Performing Arts Center in Estancia. The reason I went there is because I got a phone call, I called Scott about this from one of our residents saying that there's, we have a sewer line problem at Estancia High School. And the, the new performing arts center should not be put in this location because of the sewer problem. And I wasn't aware of any and Scott said he's not aware of any sewer line problems at Estancia. So I attended that meeting and and it's a $28.5 million project from Newport Mesa for Estancia. It's going to be, right now it's scheduled for in front, at the senior lawn area where the grass and the trees grow. But a lot of people complained about the spot. And they're looking, and I don't know what the, what new board is going to do because it's almost ready to be starting to be developed and it's already been approved at the state level. So I'm, I'll have to give you an update later if that's going to be the, the location or it's going to be changed.
Art, Art, I can give you a little background in that. I'm on the, I'm on the Committee, Citizens Oversight Committee for the bond for that Performing Arts Center. With, with the trees as a big concern, a lot of people are looking at the, the four or five other alternate locations that were evaluated and one, one of them was the South East Corner, you know, where the sewer pump station is.
Yes.
And, and that was one of the reasons why it couldn't be located there. And that was the nexus for the, you know, the, the sewer, the sewer questions. There, there weren't any questions there, but I got the same letter from from, from a lady and, or I think I got the same one and, and I checked with with, with the school administration people that are at Citizens Oversight Committee meeting and it, yeah, it, it wasn't well, well, well defined, but you know, it was just another issue. There isn't, there really is no sewer-ing problem where it's to be located. But if it were located in that southwest parking lot, that would be a sewer. That was, was one of the reasons why it wasn't located there. Anyway, sorry for going on.
Mr. President, could I, Mr. President, could I beg your indulgence? I have, I have an appointment at six o'clock. It looks like we have plenty of time. But the two closed session items have to have the attorney present. So
Okay.
If we could, you know, either get to them quickly or if we could take those out of order.
Yeah, does, does anyone have any objection to taking them out of order? Can we come back and continue?
I have a written presentation of all the things I attended that I'll put with my, that I'll send to the district for any other meetings that I attended, so we can move on from mine.
Okay, yeah, I've got a couple of meetings to report on, but if there's no objection, let's, let's go to the closed session.
And Mr. President, if I could add, we're going to close session to discuss Conference of Legal Counsel, which is under 54956.9 and that's California River Watch versus Costa Mesa Sanitary District. We're also going to discuss the Hodges versus Costa Mesa Sanitary District case. And that case is listed with its claim number, but it actually has Orange County Superior Court number. It's pending litigation. So if we could add that to the record. And it's Orange County Superior Court number 30-2019-01102477-CU-OC-CJC. And I'll give that to Nolani after tomorrow.
So we, and there, if there are no objections, so let's go to the breakout room and we just hit the join meeting there?
Yes, Mr. President, please click join. All right, everyone's in.
Is everybody, is everybody back? Okay, I'm going to reconvene to, to open session and I, I think what Art suggested was good. I have a couple of meetings to report, but what I'll do is I'll write it up and submit it with my expense reimbursement form.
Mr. President, was there any reportable action in closed session?
Oh, no, no reportable action. Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
And and it would be acceptable if you wanted to go on with your report. I don't need to be here for that part.
Okay. Does any, I have a couple of reports. Does anyone else have a, any reports? Anyway, I attended the, the Waco section, Waco session. And it was by Mesa staff and one of their consultants and it was on the Integrated Pipeline Integrity Form Program. And they they, they have a 75% of their system, 74% is asbestos cement pipe and, and it's important for them to know the condition of that pipe. And so they, like us, know the age of each, each of those types of pipe in their system. And so they they have a means of going in and checking to see the wall thickness of the pipe. And then whenever there's a, a service line break, you know, their staff is, is qualified to attend to the thing safely. Um, you know, their staff is is uh qualified to attend to the thing safely because it's asbestos cement. So you can't just go in and saw it. You have to go in like it's a, gonna be a hazardous waste uh process. And then they take samples and and then they get better focus, improve focus on uh. You know, uh, the condition of that pipe, or at least that little section of the pipe. Um, so they they believe that saving, it's gonna save a ton of money. Uh, it's gonna delay out into the future. A a lot of the replacement of that asbestos cement pipe. And um, that. Is it, and it's an initial savings uh be- because they 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 just don't go in by age and start replacing it. It's gonna be um, three quarters of the streets in Costa Mesa are gonna be uh having to be torn up because there's no way. To line uh the 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 those water lines. Um, so it's, it's still two or three hundred million. And each, with each passing year, it's going to get a larger and larger amount, but. It'll be future generations that are gonna end up paying for it. Uh, I also attended a a webinar, Orange County Sand District webinar on recycling. Um, and I I think there's gonna be the future ones. We're we're very interested as an agency in um. Um, the 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 types of recycled water that Orange County Water District. Offers, and there's two of them. Uh, one is the green, the Green Acres Project, which waters golf courses and landscape. Irrigation and uh that'll be a future one. This one was on the. Uh, water that they get out out of the, off the Prado Dam. Turns out they have twenty settling basins. And um, you know, they they put in, they they're they're very clever about how to capture all that water. Um, and and those are my reports. Uh, does anyone else have a a report?
Let me go back to Waco, Bob, uh, cause I attended that meeting also. They they have. They figure they need a hundred and thirty one million dollars for replacement for the next hundred years.
Yeah.
And I'm concerned about them charging so much right now. That's gonna go over a hundred years. They're, you know, they have a five year plan for assessment.
Yeah.
I don't know how much they're collecting, but it seems like the amount they're collecting is too much if their replacement is over a hundred years.
Well, if you, yeah, if you look at their budgets, uh, you know, that'll give you in the. Uh, in their cover letter, it'll give you a a pretty quick estimate of, you know, why why they're charging us five percent a year. Uh, their 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 indebtedness is astronomical. Uh, they just took out sixty million dollars in debt. And they had a substantial amount of debt, and they used debt to pay off their uh unfunded liability. It. It's amazing. Uh, you know, I don't know where they come up with all that money. Uh, it it, I don't think they're charging us enough.
Well, another thing that concerned me is not from the meeting, but my water bill, because. We have to pay money into Lafco every month, every two months when we get our bill. And I had never realized that before, that we're paying for Lafco. Their Lafco dues with all the citizens. You know, they have like a, they say like twenty four thousand customers that are paying every two months into the Lafco bill.
Yeah, I think it's a dollar a bill, but whatever.
Good night, everyone. Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you, sir.
Same to you.
Any any other, any other um meetings that we need to report on? If not, I think we're probably at the point where we can uh uh. Go to oral communications and directors' comments. Do do any direct, does any director have additional comments or communications?
Mister President, I do.
Go ahead, Brett.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just a couple of questions, I guess. Uh, Jim Mosher asked earlier and I. I apologize if I didn't hear the answer about about the emails. I know on the website, all of us can be contacted via email, but is there a way to put on? You know, like contact entire board type email where go all to us, because right now, the way it looks, you have to go one by one by one. And other, you know, entities do have like a contact all type thing. Is that possible?
It's Scott, are you, are you?
Yes, yes, we can, we can look into that, Director.
Okay, great.
Well, I think, I think that's a, can try, Pepe, give us some, I I think we've had something like that in the past, but. Well, anyway.
The timing's really good because we're in the process of redesigning the website, so timing's good. We can definitely look into it.
Perfect, thank you. And then um, a couple of meetings ago, uh, member of the public, uh. Uh, Sue Lester, who's on the uh Citizens Advisory Committee, had, you know, talked about. Representation from the various divisions and all that. So my question, Scott, would be um, is there, could we get a report? Maybe for our next study session about the uh, the makeup of the current Citizens Advisory Committee and their respective divisions. That they reside in and then.
Yeah.
Cause if we're gonna have seven new uh potential spots open, it would be good to know what we've got now. And i- if we wanna go that direction, you know.
Yeah, and man, Brett, maybe even like the city council, we could, each each individual member could have one or more potential appointments.
Right, exactly. So I would just like to know the current makeup and at least, because if they're all in uh. Next door to uh Art Perry, you know.
It might be.
Actually, Art, you live uh right next door to uh uh my family, uh. The Lorenz family and before that Catherine Eccles, so.
Yeah, I know the Lorenz, Lorenz family.
Yep, yep, so.
Yeah, not a problem, Director. We can, we can do that for you.
All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else have any oral communications or director's comments?
Yeah, my my comment is is for everybody to have their. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy Hanukkah, the Hanukkah's already gone, but uh whatever you celebrate, I hope it's good and uh. Hope next year's a little easier than this year.
Yes, and and I wanna thank you all for all, yeah, all the appointments that I received. I'll I'll do my, I'll 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 work very hard on them.
Good job, Bob.
And happy, happy, happy holidays and a safe new year and 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 I just heard news that uh. People over seventy five are gonna be. Soon on the list to get the COVID shot, so.
Yeah, but Brett, Brett and I aren't even close, so we're not gonna get one apparently.
I'm last in line for sure. Got that right.
Well, it's 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 like when I was, I was about ready to be drafted, women, all of a sudden, when I became twenty six, women and children had to go before me.
You still do, Bob.
Well, you know, you you can be the test case. How about that? And I'll wait to see how you do.
Happy holidays to all of you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any any other comments? Um, if if not, it's probably, it's time to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much. Uh, it's been a good year and and uh. It'll be, it'll be fun and um and and a very good, I'm looking forward to a very good next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Enjoy your vacation, Scott.
Thanks.